Okay, let's get started. Engine Dhyan Mudra, first finger tip and thumb tip together. Close the eyes through the opening process. And we're gonna chant three long omkar, deep breathing and each time exhale, we're gonna chant A, U, M, O, together. Join hands together in front of chest. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Bhunattu Sahaviriyam Karvava Hai Tejasvinavati Tamastuma Vidhishava Hai Om Shanti 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 Keep the eyes closed, join the hands at back of the body and bow forward to the mother supreme earth. Inhale, come back up, rub the palms to each other. Make them warm and place the hands over eye then face. Open and close eyes under palms, couple of times. Slide the fingers all over the face, slide hand down slowly open the eyes. Welcome everybody. We're gonna start our practice as usual. Bharat Bai here next to me, so half hour will do yoga practice and then half hour will talk with Bharat Bai. So let's start with some light exercise, sukshma vyayava waist and a bowl. So we don't have so much time for yoga, so we're gonna cut down pauses and practice. Alternate. So quickly, we're gonna go around, utilize all the joints, muscles as much as possible. To make sure if there is no any discomfort, pain or any issue. Make fist and release few times. And push together, roll them forward. And few times backward direction. Then spin swing the hands. Do with breath coordination, breathe in when elbows go up. Breath out when you bring the hands down to the floor. Also connect the finger at the shoulder. Few times sideways. And hold all the fingers together on the shoulder, make a circle. Inhale when elbows go up, exhale when you push them back and down. When you bring them, front should touch once in each rotation. And if you do reverse direction if you haven't yet. Okay. Hold the hands on the sideways. Turn the palms ninety degree up. And make them circle, it'll go around the shoulder. Few times in both the directions. And few times reverse. And relax. Make sure when you connect, make sure that you are muted. Bring the right hand at the back. And left palm will go behind the right knee. Exhale, turn towards right, look all the way back. And twist at the lower back. Come back and other side. One more time, both sides. And push the elbows, I mean push the knee forward, so we'll have a good position. Okay. Sit in L shape. Palms on the side, make sure trunk is straight, completely L shape. Legs straight, squeeze and release those two times. Then push them forward and bring them back, forward, backward few times. You can do it breath coordination, inhale when you push them forward, exhale when you bring the toes towards the body. Then few times alternate. One forward, one backward. And keeping the heels together, toes together, just circle them around. And few times reverse direction. Hold the one leg, bring the foot to midpoint of the other leg, interlock the fingers with the toes and use the other palm to push the knee down to the floor, hold there for a second or two. Exhale, using the lower arm, bring the knee to chin. Inhale and push the knee again down to the floor, do four to five times on each side. When you're done on one side, gently switch to the other side. That's part of this step. Okay, then hold both the legs. Similarly, that's what I'm doing. Well, you'll totally awesome butterfly pose, interlock the fingers, press them over the toes. Try to bring knees closer to the floor. Okay, stop clapping now, I will let Bharat Bai do, we're gonna do Patthangasana or Sishupalasana, let's say. This is butterfly asan, we need. Anati chal lower back chenema release manche, just stickness avache lower back niyanda, ema tamne ekam relief manse. Itlaana amdo viswissna troncharpaseklo karta hoheche, itla 20 times uddaya padani kariye. Padavada reja ukarjo sarvadma, oshi fact flexibility ase, pachi, okay, avy jarashtop kariye. And yaapru right leg chenesh, straight kariye, avy left leg ne upar kariye. And elbow paase foot leje, ne, vijalbo paase ne, avy ema kariye, waist set kariye. Sarvadma oshu tase, pachi flexibility vade, itla tamne, any movement vadarjo, left, right, side. And jethlo par upar ave, etlo tamne saharu, kanke apre stiness, oshi tamaate, lower back ma vadar movement karva mate, tamare stretching vadar karu jaruri se. This will open up the hip joints and increase the blood circulation. Lower back ma tamne vada muscles ne relief karav se. Okay, one, one side kari naake, pachi, bakul bhai proceed, ase, ek side ajii kari lo, right leg upar le jo. Ashishupalasana chen, baadakon ne jam mata ne ramadhi hoche, evi te apre sishupalasana, asan nu naam yaad rakho. Ajana jana lower back steep thi jati, vay savar ma jaagho, thiaare, prena matte, boh saras kamnoche, pachi jana, thaibol points ma pain rehtu, osh stiness rehti hoey. To, ilde ko ne boh kamnoche, avy bija padne apre kariye. Jethlo foot ane niy upar ave, leg no ukarjo tamne, kanke pele var karta, biji var ma tamare flexibility vadi gaya se. Okay, avy bakul bhai proceed, karsa aadan. Okay, so we were in a totally awesome pose, we're done with the clapping the knees, then we're gonna go side by side, we'll get closer to the heels. Actually the back, I mean bottom of the body also get some massage and get active, yeah, sit straight. Adhaasan, make sure, push the knees down to the floor. Spine erect, close the eyes. And you can deeply inhale into lower abdomen and hold the breath for few seconds. Fill extra stretch in the pelvis area, hip joints. Do two to three times. And experience the stretch. Then just move side by side and go slightly backward. Keeping the heel at the same place, hold the toes separately. We're gonna sit straight first, inhale, look up. Exhale. And just push the trunk forward and when it comes the lower back, see if you can drop the head down to the pit. Inhale one more time, adha konasan. Okay, back up, we're gonna sit in cross leg posture, padmasan or sidhasan, sukhasan, swastikasana, any of the comfortable pose. Thank you Bharat Bai for those poses, actually we, once in a while we do that, but we just didn't know the name. Okay, and in English book, I hope the name would translate to baby carrying pose, I would say, because they're just translated literally. Alright, we'll do parvatasan. Close the eyes, we're gonna bring the hands into pranam mudra while we inhale. Do with fully consciousness, fully awareness, exhale here, inhale, bring the palms over to the head. Rest there, exhale, inhale again and straighten both the hands, bring the palms all the way up towards the ceiling and hold there. While you exhale, bring the palms down back, top of the head, front of chest, all the way down. And by the time you fully exhale, let's do one more time with your own pace, do with the breath coordination. Okay, we'll do next, bastrika pranayam. Straight jump into the variation one, bring the fist at the shoulder level. Inhale, raise both hands up and open the fist, exhale, bring it down back and make a fist. Inhale up, exhale down forcefully, inhale up, exhale down, do with your own capacity. Speed according to your own limit. Okay, conclude. Next we'll do kapal bhati pranayama, we'll keep hands in vayubutra, roll first finger into the root of thumb. We're gonna deeply inhale once in lower abdomen, then we're gonna exhale in multiple acceleration forcefully. Okay, complete when you breathe out fully. Let's have a Bharat Bai also introduce couple more stretches, let's say, we might be familiar with it, let's say.
Ama jarau bata upar se, itla vada, uba thija. And yaapru ek pa gucho kari, ya ne ghor feravanoche, das count karvana che. Yaapru das count karjo, koncent, leg concentration exercise se. Round, round feravana che, jethlo round vadarre, phero etru tamaru concentration saharu, setlu round phero, ten count karo. Okay, ten count thi jai, ya left side na pachhi, same direction ma ten count karo. Okay. Avy opposite direction ma, right leg opposite direction ma ten count kariye. Okay, another leg. Kala karta, opposite direction ma ten count karo, and ya ghor banao, circle pakti. Okay. Banne aasne wide stepen karo. And left side, jethlo twist side, jethlo karo, vadar ne karta, jethlo, utai dekho, and slowly opposite direction ma. Thori time hold karjo, nethron second, okay. Again. Full strength hai pyare, thuru hold karjo. Five times kari so. Last and fifth time. Okay, avy alternate thumb ne apre touch karvana che, kala mane joi le jo, ho exercise je karu, tumne khbar aja se, badana stretching exercise se. Play, left thumb, right fingers and right fingers, left thumb. Okay. Twenty count kari so nonstop. Head tamaru, jethlo upar jai, jethlo le jo. Upar jo jai. Okay. Pachay, nah, ek thirty second lele, airoa. Okay, me, bakul bhai, tamaya aaya, tamara pranayama stretching exercise aati, because stretching very easy hoheche, karav bant thi sake. Yep, so, let's sit down, pachi, bakul bhai kari, kalu karnakarav jo, aaj di akshin, ari te. Ne viri te, pachi, left agar lahi ne, pachh ro, lapraa je kariye chena, that's part of the root into. Yeah, pachyavai shukariye, keshet, jare standing posture vaage, jare vada chatao, itla back and forth, jana le, pachay, yes. Namaj jana le, kariye, kya, twenty time ke ten time kariye, rehne padle, kariye, bekethran vakat, we'll stay in a pose. Okay. Vaju kariye, vol karin, vol na vol karakil, pachya darsa, yavi riye. Good, alright, thank you Bharat Bai. So, let's do few of the sitting posture, we'll spread both the legs apart, the main one only, we will cover. Won't be able to cover all of them, just spread both the legs apart, keep the knees straight, inhale. Look up, to expand the chest, exhale. Bring both hands down over to the pit, left to left, right to right and see if you can push the trunk down. Inhale, come back up and one more time, go down, exhale. See if you can grab feet. Inhale, come back up. To chaki talanasan, we'll reverse the palm. And we'll start from the left to right, the palm's gonna travel all the way towards, over the toes and the knees. Just stay muted, don't tug the phone. Okay. Make four to five circles clockwise and then anti clockwise. Chaki talanasan, grinding pose. Can inhale when you go back, exhale when you bend forward. And don't forget to switch the side. Okay, then bring both the legs together, we'll do paschimutanasan. Actually the previous pose was a grinding pose, right, apra ek kevach chagudrati ma, kya aivata malvan beshada jida dalva. La Bharat Bai ne uchide, malva aivata, ne yoga beshada jida. Okay, anyway, that was the grinding pose, dalva, okay, grinding pose, chaki talanasan. Paschimutanasan, raise both hands up, legs together. Inhale, look up, exhale, bend it from the lower back, push the trunk forward if you can and grab the toes or feet. Push the head down. One more time, inhale, both hands go up. Exhale, go down, one more time. And push the trunk further down. Hold the pressure for few seconds. Okay, we'll do complementary pose to that, the purva uttanasan, bring both palms at the back. And lift the body up, try to keep the knees as close as possible, but heels and toes should be on the floor. Raise the trunk fully up, drop the head at the back. Reverse plank also a call in English. And very slowly, bring the trunk back to the floor. Next we'll do gomukhasan. Hold both the legs, heels closer to the body, knee aligned top of each other, closer, whichever knee is up. Raise that side hand, we'll go from the top to back, other hand will go straight back. Connect both the palms, fingers. And correct the posture, straighten the trunk, look straight up, next straight, look at the level of the eyes. Very gently switch to the other side, gomukhasan, cow face pose. Okay, and release, next we'll do ardhamachchandraasana, hold the leg posture, just bring the one foot slightly. Okay, and release, next we'll do ardhamachandraasana, hold the leg posture, just bring the one foot slightly forward outward of the other knee. And. And the knee bring it up, whichever knee is up, that side hand will go at the back of the body. Other hand will go up, inhale, exhale, and bring it around the knee, push the knee. And try to grab the ankle. Exhale and turn back. Inhale, come back and switch to the other side, you can put the palms on a floor at the back of the body, aligned with the spine. So it will support the trunk basically, so trunk will remain straight. You can use the bicep to push the knee. Towards one side, so you will be able to grab ankles or the knee right there. And then excellent turn back. Ardhamachandraasana. Okay. Let's get on. Shidhanavadrasana. Yeah, we still have seven thirty, just half an hour, thank you. Yep, vadrasan, or we can call it diamond pose. We'll do mandukhasan, so separate the knees, few inches away. Extend both hands forward, make tight fist, can keep thumb inside, make tight fist, deeply inhale into lower abdomen and hold the breath. Put the top of the fist at the navel, forcefully exhale. And bend down forward, don't leave the heels, but try to bring head closer to the floor. When you can no longer go down, slightly tilt the head up tilt. So you can see few inches ahead of you. Inhale, come back up, one more time. Fist, deeply inhale. Hold. Press up, the fist on the navel, forcefully exhale. Bend down. And tilt. Okay. We'll do straight full camel pose today, we'll stand on the knees. Make sure knees and feet are separated same as shoulder width throughout. Inhale. And raise one hand up in circular fashion, bring it down back, exhale. And rest on the heel. Inhale, other hand go up. Rest on the other heel, drop the head back, push the pelvis area forward. And keep on pressing while keep pressing the head towards downward or backward. Sidhustrasankamupad. And very slowly, come back to initial posture, one hand at a time, no rush. Okay. And let's do next, sthasankasana, we did backward bending, so now we're gonna do forward bending. Move the knees outward in order to accommodate our trunk in between the knees. Both palms in the middle, now keep head and trunk in straight line, don't drop the head. And as we walk the hands forward, the trunk automatically will drop down to the floor. And extend both the hands over the head, and chin or chest or forehead on the floor now. And relax the back. The lower back. Chhatiyo darwana kwejo, dhani. Yeah, if you can touch the chest and chin, that would be best, so you can go even further down. Very slowly walk the hands back. And let the trunk push back to the normal, now back to the diamond pose, vadrasan. Next, we'll do supta vadrasan. Bring both palms at the back of the body, and very slowly, gently. Let the trunk go back. And if you don't have much flexibility, you can just stay on the elbows, otherwise you can extend the hands forward. And let the whole trunk. Completely flat on the floor, back of the head on the floor, even you can bring the palms at top and bring it down on thigh. You can close the eyes, let the whole body relax. Hold ankles, push the elbows down to the floor, push the body up, back to vadrasan. Again, let's get back on one knee. The one leg will be extended. Raise other hand up. Inhale. Exhale, slide the hand down along with the other leg, extended leg. While you exhale, bring the hand down, bend it down. As much as you can towards the extended leg, and keep looking upward. Look toward the ceiling or the hand which is in air. Hari khasan, gate pose. And bring the hand. On a side, right now. And. Bring the hand towards the other side. And just press it as much as you can. Come back to normal posture and switch the leg. And into the variation. Okay, inhale, come back up. Uttesthatu, stand up. So, Bharat bhai, ekme stretch is already karavi na kasi, so we don't need to repeat the waist rotation, it was already done. Let's keep the pit few inches away. Inhale, go on the toes. And raise both hands up, you can interlock the fingers, palms upside down, push the palms towards the ceiling. Slowly bring them down, let's walk around the mat, walk on the toes, make two circle. And then walk on the heels. That was we did earlier, like standing. Sit on the, rocking on the heels. Okay. We'll do. Tiriaktaadasan, so keep the pit, couple of pit apart. Interlock the fingers, palms upside down, hold them up. And like palm trip pose, gonna sway on one side, then other side, so let's sway on one side, exhale when you do that. Keep the elbows and knees straight. Inhale, come back up, and the other side. Back up, inhale. Bend forward. And let the upper body completely hang. At the waist, just let it be its own on the gravity. Inhale. Raise hands up and whole body up. And bend towards backward. Back up. Next, we'll do virbadrasan, as to couple of poses, couple of variations in virbadrasan, we'll do one and two. Separate the legs, turn the one foot ninety degree outward, the other foot will facing forward. Whichever leg is outward ninety degree, bend that knee. Bring both hands down. Inhale. And bring both hands up and bend backward. Silvir vadrasan one, and hold in a pose, both hands straight, fingers pointing towards ceiling. And you can push trunk as much as down. Closer to the floor and pushing the trunk bending backward. Come back up. And switch to the other side. You can exhale when you go down, then inhale, raise both hands up and bend backward. The trailing leg would remain straight. And hold in a pose. Slowly come back up. Same pit position again on other side, now we'll do virbadrasan two. In that, we're gonna straighten both the hands in the same line, but we need to bend towards the leg. The pit which is ninety degree outward, we're gonna chant two Gayatri mantra, while in a pose. Om bhur bhuvah swaha, tatsavittur varanyam, fargo devasya dhi mahi, dhio yo na prachodaya. Om bhur bhuvah swaha, tatsavittur varanyam, fargo devasya dhi mahi, dhio yo na prachodaya. Switch to the other side. Om bhur bhuvah swaha, tatsavittur varanyam, fargo devasya dhi mahi, dhio yo na prachodaya. Om bhur bhuvah swaha, tatsavittur varanyam, fargo devasya dhi mahi, dhio yo na prachodaya. Yeah, it's been few sessions we didn't do virbadrasan. Okay, so we have about twelve to, about fifteen minutes with the yoga poses. Until we move to the next pose, I mean next section, let's do. Balancing pose. Tree pose. And very slowly, gently switch to the other side. Okay. Let's try. Couple of more balancing falls. Next, we'll do uttishthahastapadamgustasana, use first two fingers. And hold it into the correct direction, use like hold the thumb. The big toe. Straighten the leg, move it sideways. And raise it up, you can use other hand as a counterbalance. Or you can just put it on waist. And switch to the other side, if you've done one side. And slowly come out all the pose. That was uttishthahastapadamgustasana, I'll just saying the name so you'll remember it. Okay, next we'll do garudasan, I think few, previous few sessions we probably didn't get chance. Garudasan, make sure the one foot firm on the floor, you can spread the toes, make sure you have a good grip. And other leg will go around. And you can intertwine with the other leg. Then you can. Lock the hands just like eagle. Your breath is not normal, if you're talking, it's very hard to keep the balance, you are completely calm. And you can try this pose, it would be much better, and you can increase the duration with lots of practice, the first important part is locking the legs. Eagle pose, garudasan. Next, we'll do paschim namaskar. Push both the palms all the way up, and then push elbows backward, circle automatically align the palms. Spread the legs far apart. Turn towards one side, towards one leg. Inhale, look up, exhale, and bend forward towards the knee. See if you can bring head as much as closer to the knee. Don't let the knees bend, just. Make sure they are straight, and turn towards the other side. Inhale, look up, exhale, bend forward. Back up. Inhale. Exhale, then forward. And let the upper body be its own, let it be hand. Let it be hang. Inhale, come back up. And bend backward. And release the hands. So I think we'll do a few poses in laying down. And later at the end we will go into Yognindra. So before Yognindra, we don't need to do those poses. So we can just let's lay down on the stomach. Extend both hands forward over the head. And push the toes toward the back wall. Full stretch. Then inhale, raise hands, head, chest, chin up. And raise the legs up to flying pose, Superman pose. So it should be only on the pelvis or the stomach area on the floor. Okay, very gently rest in Makarasan. Hold both the hands, head down, maybe on left or right. The rest on the folded hand. Both legs separated. Inhale, exhale, normal. Next we'll do simple Danurasan. Hold both the legs. Grab ankles left to left, right to right. Inhale, raise head, chest, chin up. Pull both legs up. Same time you can push the knees up as well. While you pulling using the hands. So double force will give good arch. And look up as much as you can. Slowly get back to Makarasan. And take few breaths in and out. With closed eyes, let the whole body fully relax. Next we'll do Arthasalabhasan. Bring both palms under thighs. Bring both legs together. Shoulder blades, chest, chin flat on the floor. Raise the one leg up. To straight out. Hold the other leg to put the foot somewhere. Or the thigh of the other leg which is raised to support it. And hold it there and relax the lower back. While you pushing the other leg up, relax the lower back. Slowly switch to the other side, to the other leg. Don't forget to stretch the toes towards the back wall. Okay, very gently bring both legs down, left to the floor. Lay down in a Makarasan for few seconds. Fully relax and listen to the body parts. Scan the whole body in few seconds. Then let's turn around. Lay down on a back of the body. Because we just relaxed in a Makarasan. So we don't need to lay down in a Shavasana for few seconds. Just extend both the hands in the back. We'll do Ustikasana, stick pose. Stretch toes towards the wall in front of you. Pretend that there are two different forces pulling us towards opposite direction. Feel the full stretch. And relax. Now bring both hands side of the body. We'll raise the legs about sixty to eighty degree up. And the trunk also make the same angle. So we'll do Sampurnanukasana. So try to bring toes as close as possible to the fingers. Keeping the elbows and knees straight. Look to the toenails through the fingernails. The angle between trunk and floor and legs and floor should be pretty much similar. Very slowly bring the legs down back to the floor. And trunk back to the floor. Lay down in Shavasana. Shavasana is like separating feet. Couple of feet away, toes pointing outward. Both the hands. Side of the body away from the body. Palms facing ceiling, fingers semi-closed. Eyes closed, let the whole body relax. Don't hold any muscle, any body part. Just let it be on its own on the gravity. Hold the one leg. And interlock the fingers. And both the palms. Just hold under the knee. Exhale, bring the knee toward the chin. Just one knee at a time. Bring it toward the chin and holding. Pavan Muktaasana. And switch to the other side. The other leg. Let's hold both the legs. Bring the knee, knees up, the pit up. We'll do pedaling. Pedal ten times forward. Pretend that there is a big bicycle with a big pedals. Put both the palms downward next to the body to support the body. And each time when foot go away, stretch the toes towards the one, the wall in front of you. Once you complete ten counts in one direction, then switch the direction. And pedal ten times. Okay. Relax in a Shavasana. Full relax. Then with closed eyes, you can keep awareness on both the legs. You can enjoy the sensations of relaxation. Bring both legs together. Both palms facing down. Right next to the thighs. Lift both legs ninety degree up. Uttan padasana. So we usually don't skip this pose, it's very important. It fixes the solar plexus, the navel chakra. Hold both the legs straight up, ninety degree up. And hold there at least another twenty seconds. And then we're gonna start lowering the legs each by each down to the floor. Start lowering the legs just each by each. The last few inches are really critical. And you need to hold the legs, not to drop. No crash landing. And lay down in Shavasana. And enjoy the sensations of relaxation. If you let all the muscle body part go its own, let them fully relax. Then you will see the relaxation. It will fail, I mean. The last yoga pose today. We'll do Machiasana. Bring both legs together. Both palms under the thighs. Lift the whole upper body up. Toes stretch out to the wall in front of you. Knees straight. And bring the upper body back and rest on the top of the head. And look back. The whole trunk area will be away from the floor. You can hold in a pose. At least thirty to forty seconds. Stay in a pose, keep looking back. This will expand whole throat area, thoracic region. Machiasana. Face pose. And relax from the pose. And come back up to the sitting posture. Now, we're done with the yoga poses today. It's been been an hour already. So let's sit down and we're gonna have a talk with Bharat Bhai. To make it easy and I had communication with you folks. And I made up with some kind of, some list kind of things together. So that would be better behalf of the group. I'm going to ask questions Bharat Bhai and let him explain whatever he thinks best. Based on his knowledge, whatever he got from his all the courses and whatever he studied. And in between, let's say, or at the end, you guys, if you guys think that something is not covered. And you might need to ask, you will get chance to. So the main question to Bharat Bhai, Bharat Bhai Modya from Mumbai. Actually he came to US about couple of weeks ago. And he was in New Jersey. He was completely quarantined. Make sure that he is not infected, no issue. Got couple of times COVID test negative. Make sure it's all well and good, then they started trip. So we are the first one to see them. And first thing I will think about our yoga family to meet. So, shall we start? I think we're done with one hour. We went over one hour actually, couple of minutes. So the main question I had, first one is. Bharat Bhai, he is in Gujarat. I'm trying to try to get it. Can you discuss it? I think my English is good. If you speak English, you can communicate better in our native language. So I tried to speak English, Gujarat. Like Gujarat is good. Actually, you can communicate better in our native language. So I tried to speak English, Gujarat. You have to learn it. And Bharat Bhai, feel free. Everybody understands Gujarat. Okay. I hope so, I didn't look at because I need to switch. Because there are few people on other page too, I did not flip over.
Jasi Krishna, Dharek Yuga Premine, good morning.
Good, yeah, so looks like everybody should be good with Gujarat. So Bharat Bhai from Diamond Business. My first question is that being in that business man, in a diamond business. You have a mind, brain, mental reaction, courses. I am very interested in this.
Akshay Bakul, I asked you about psychology subject. Did you study deeply? The reason is that after five years. My left ear is starting to pain. So at the beginning, I liked my mobile. But after a lot of ENT patients, I heard that I am not immune to the pain. ENT specialist gave me a suggestion. I was in a drone camera. I checked. I said, is the system okay? I felt that I am feeling pain. I said, if the wind comes, it will chill. Then the wind comes, I use my mobile. If I have electronic, electrical instruments, transform. If I use a machine, I feel pain. I said, if you are not sick. I said, I am not sick. But I have a big brain. So my brain is not sick. But I have no problem with brain. But I am still feeling pain. But I have a physician. I said, if you have a brain system, you have no problem. But I have a problem. So my neurophysician, Gaba 150, has a pain killer. Mainly, my brain is tense, depressed, and I have a pain killer. But I have taken three or four courses. I have a routine tablet. I have a pain. I was disturbed. And I have a problem with anxiety. I was tired for hours. I was in a new hospital. A senior doctor. Young assistant doctor. I talked to him. I said, I am not a senior doctor. Actually, I have a problem with pain. I try to do busy. I suggest you try. I said, I have a psychological, psychiatric problem. But I have a knowledge, a mentor, mentors. I have a context. So I said, I will try. But I researched, I heard news. That our mind related problems, psychological problems. I tried to do deep research. And I have a treatment. I have a training. So in four to five days, I heard that I have fifty percent pain. I heard news. That I have a psychological problem. Actually, psycho somatic problem. Our life has three kinds of problems. One is a problem. A somatic problem. We have a mind problem. Psycho problem. And mechanical problem. A physical problem. A different type of problem. So psycho and somatic, psycho somatic problem. In our life, ninety percent of the problems. If you are worried, you will solve it. If you are new, it is a problem. It is a mind problem. So I have taken different courses. And I have a lot of interest in this. If I have a doctor, I have a checkup. But if I can cure, I have no doubt. So I have a lot of things. If I have a psychological problem, I can solve it. And I have a plan. Why do you do this? People have a problem. If you have a problem with pain. So you can help us.
Good, thank you. So after that, we have a hundred percent cure. And I said, people have a disease. If you think about tension, your skin will turn red. Your skin will irritate. And I said, my mind has a problem. I am worried. I am angry. My mind has a problem, I am worried, angry, angry, feeling out of control. Then my mood is red. So I have a dangerous idea, I am worried, a problem, within the target timeline, our work is not done. So even if I have a normal picture, I have a red one. So I said that people have read, they have talked about it. Okay, okay. Yeah, so what we talked about, brain, so our general, our general, brain is very important. What is actually, how it is important, what is the function even related to this part, like how it interacts?
Bakul, you asked me about body is an important part. So first, heart, lungs, kidneys. However, I have learned that even if you have a bad mood, our body is an important part. Because your lungs, your heart, kidneys work, however, your brain is working. So in your life, you are not happy, you are not sensitive, it means that mind is important.
So I said that subconscious mind and conscious mind is important.
Okay, it means that in medical language, brain is there, in traditional language, I said. So doctors, in medical language, we talk about it, they talk about brain. And our yoga, traditional, spiritual, mind is there. So my brain is a part, but actually, in function, science is in there, we understand both. Then psychology education is in there. So one part is mindfulness, and the other part is mindfulness, conscious mind and subconscious mind. So mindfulness is there, it is only eighty percent of the function. The other ones are subconscious mind. So how to function, let me understand. So mindfulness is five senses, it is a work of mind. Words per sentence, feelings, auditory words. So subconscious mind is there, our conscious mind is there, any language is a sense language. Because our computer has a keyboard, and if you put a pad, you have a pen. But our keyboard and pen are not available, it is a sense language. What color is it, a color picture, it remembers. If you play music in the garden, you remember music. A word remembers, but it is pleasant feeling, so skin remembers. And if you have a bad mood, you are angry, you are talking about love, you are talking about gesture, you are telling. It is a bit of a shock, it is remembered. So it remembers, but it is not remembered. I have deleted, I have distorted, and I have generalized. So what nature has obtained, built, five years, it is logical mind. It is logical mind, but after five years, we started to learn logically. Logical mind is there. So the nature, surrounding, and the whole world, it is a tree, developed. So nature is generalized, it is a problem. If anything happens, the four best people, they have a problem, they store it in a different way. We completely delete, partially delete. We absolutely distort, completely distorted. And generally, it is zero percent, one hundred percent, subconscious mind is there. Set that is there. Now, if I talk about subconscious mind. So our mindfulness system, which is a ram, a computer ram. A computer ram says that there are twenty, twenty-five screens. But if you turn off the computer, it starts, then your ram, the screen, the side is open. However, I saved it, saved the page, you tell me. In that, subconscious mind, our things are saved, it is a human level, humanity. So people have to take photos, they don't have to, and people have to take photos, they have to be careful. This humanity is created, and humanity is adjusted accordingly. This is what we are doing.
Good, so it was like RAM and hard drive, memory and hard drive, okay. I told you, we have a international, twelve, thirteen courses, we have a mind related, psychology related. NLP, a word, so it is a country, what is NLP?
NLP, I will tell you, our mind is a language, neuro linguistic programming. Neuro, it means a word, linguistic, it means a language. And programming, it means NLP knowledge, you want to ask. That your mind, what is feeling, peace, joy, happiness, happiness. Your memories, whatever things you store, you can do programming. So NLP, neuro linguistic, it means that you have five senses, you understand the language. You store it, you behave it, but you can do programming in it. And re imprinting is also there. So it is useful, NLP, at least state of mind changes, belief changes, attitude changes. It means that mind's decision changes, action changes, result changes.
Good. Okay, stress, relief, anything, any trick, tip, little exercise, how?
Yes, yes. It means that NLP is the most important job, whether you add or减, whether you confident building, whether you goal setting, whether you stress relief. So the most important job, you can do. So in NLP, we stress relief, we have a project. So I have a project, so everyone, please close your eyes. And I will say, please be careful, follow the conversation. Everyone has closed their eyes. Now, I have a suggestion, that your life, your health, loss, big loss. If you have a hurt, and if you have a difficulty, you have to remember, breathe, remember. Because our bodies are damaged, and you have a negative, you have a difficulty, you have a difficulty. So you have to remember, if it is a matter, incident, moment, our painful. Okay, please open your eyes. Okay, now I want to compare, because stress is related. So you have a feeling, you have a feeling. You have a state of mind, you have a little stress. Now, Bakul, I have understood, now you have to use it. Now, please close your eyes. Our people, we have mentors, gods, guides, who have shown our path, our life is full of them. Our people have lived their life in all positions, our understanding, our social status, our financial, economical status. Our intelligence, develop, help, who have shown our direction. Or the people who thank us, always we are thanksgiving for them. So you have to remember, please memorize them, one or two person more problem, more person no problem. Close your eyes and memorize, or the whole mind, that you have done your life, they have helped us. Otherwise, if you go far, you have to give thanks, and a lesson, if successful, you have to. Okay, please open your eyes. Thanksgiving is still there, we are close, first Thanksgiving, we are going to say. Okay, so one minute, on, somebody.
Yeah, while, while, no, they can mute, unmute them.
Please unmute them, we have a difference in heart. Please, please, share some experience if anybody have to. If you have a problem, you have a state of mind, your mind, there is a difference, you have to say.
Yes, I feel sad, I feel sad, you have to remember, you have to remember.
Yes, it means that you have a feeling, that the first time you have done, a little stress, anger, anger. Yes, say, thank you.
First, I have a question, I have a question, it was so bad experience, so bad person. So I have to say, I have to say, I remember it, what was that scene and everything. And the gone is gone. And after that, I have said, I have a memory of the person, how it was. I have my name, I have a friend, a teacher, Adhaji, he is forty-three years old. And I have seen it for the first time, then for the second time, and I have seen it for a long time. I have appreciated it, I have seen it, I have talked to him, oh my god, it was so happy moment. So this is very different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say something?
Yeah.
Yes, Saman, Saman.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, my name is Dikran, but my name is. Sorry, sorry. I have a difference, that if you have a person, you have to remember. Because you have been hurt, so I have remembered, I hardly remember one or two persons. But I have said that if you have a person, you have to remember, that you have been hurt. There are many people, I am happy, it means that you have a problem. Because you have a bad person, you have a bad person, you have a problem, you have a difficulty. I want to say, I have a stress, I have a focus, painful memories, unwanted memories. And if you have a problem, you have to focus. So your mind has a feeling, you have read, so we have used NLP's way to delete. And we have joyful memories. So we have removed it through NLP's way, and we have joyful memories. So you have a problem, you have criticized, and you have a problem, that you have a problem. So you have a problem, you have to be happy, you have to be practical. People have reviewed, you have been in Mumbai, you have done, you have a problem.
Okay, I think, we have talked about it, that you have a glass, you have a glass. You have a feeling, oh my god, you have a video, you have a feeling, wow, you have a glass. Like how we take it basically, this is, I think, that's what it sounds like.
However, NLP has a feeling, that people have a knowledge, they cannot be happy. There is a reason, that in subconscious mind, you have bad memories, it is fit, it means that you have a knowledge, educated. You have a knowledge, so I have experienced, sorry, practical, delete, it is amazing experience, you will realize.
Good, so. So I think, my question is, Bimal Bhai, Javeri. When NLP was migraine pain, was it that, that type of specific medicine?
Absolutely, NLP hypnotherapy, a little bit, it is a migraine pain, it is a hundred percent fine, a hundred percent cured. Okay. But we have a project, and we have a question, Bakul, we have discussed. So I have a practical answer, but I have a different session.
And in between, Bimal Bhai, you can, you can type it in the chat. So we will in between cover while I ask. Okay, explain about the body language, yep.
Okay. Our fifty to sixty trillion cells are created, we are not simple identity, we are not one identity. In Kachin, you have Bakul, Bharat, and actually, we are fifty-six trillion. It means that our cells, mind, body, mind, body, the cells, the responsibility, it is a work of mind. It means that even if you have a thought, your body is sensitive. It means that I have a mind, your mind is active, it means that people have a lot of money. And if you have a lot of money, you have to pay. So we have a question, why are you in the day? Because you are very poor, very poor, so you have a money, it is a money, it is a money. It is an upper stage. So our thoughts, our body language, we have to say. If you have a gesture, gesture is a thing, if you have a start, it is automatic, it is activated. If you are angry, it is excited, it is a profit, it is a profit, it is a law, it is a law. However, it is a subconscious mind, it is a decision. It means that our body language, it is a project, absolute connection. It means that you have a question, you have talked, it is a reason, body language.
I think, we have a photo, we have a wrong. But we have a bad mood, we have a bad person.
Body language, example, you have a police station, you have a police, India, I have not heard. It means that a police is standing, a police is standing. They have arranged a discipline table, you have to talk, body language, you have strict, perfect, particular, legal work. And if you have a bad mood, you have to talk, it is a body language. It means that a busy knowledge, a project.
Right, right, right. We have talked about quantum theory, you have to ask, what is that? We have explained, you have to talk about it. Let us, this is the best time, just tell me, what is the quantum theory? I am a scientist, I am a scientist, I have a good mind, but how it goes with the brain and the whole mind related thing?
Quantum theory, physical subject, but I have explained it in psychology. First, you have to say physics background, and theory. It means that quantum theory is an energy theory. It means that photons, protons, atoms, cells, it is a Brahman, it is a cells, photons, light, photons. The atoms are created, so the tiny particles, particles, photons, atoms, cells. So everyone, universe, waves, journey through the waves. So quantum theory, you have to say, that an atom, a fraction of second, a billion, you have to talk about it. So quantum theory, I have explained, that even if particles, science, decide, you have to say. Science, innovation, it is not a percent, it is a problem, unsolved. So quantum theory, you have to say, that even if you discuss, Brahman, you have to say. Because every tiny matter, particles, a creature, a bee, touch. Now, I have explained it in a medical language, that I have a thank you, that I have a thank you. So thank you, my mind, you have heard, and telepathy, law of attraction. Because you have a busy language, a busy theory, I have explained it in a language, it is a problem. That my mind, my body, cells, universe, it is a connection. Thank you, my body, universe, it is a connection. Thaakarsi bainna par cells universe saate jodaila chah, ane universe ni andar derek vastu gati karechah. Toh ye lokon ni par ek one way chah, two way chah, six way line chah, toh ye lokon par ek bija saate ek mekna touch ma hota hoy chah. Ane a vadu kariyat hai chah fraction of seconds ni andar, itle ghani vara aapre koi manas nitru khara vichari hoy. Ane jare na maliyeh toh i potes respond eh vo vik aapre aapne, aapne em thay ke aapne aapri baat koe kai di thi. Diwalokon vikan hotay, par diwal ne ka na thi vata, aapra kaan ma thi vastu bar gayi, ane ena kaan ma jati rey.
Okay, so so my cellphone is connected to tower wherever nearby me. Somebody's cellphone is connected to death tower somewhere, and that all the towers are on network, okay? I I think chat ma joey ok, kanti by devani no prashna chah, luckily, yeah that's my next. I have that question too, what is the difference between NLP hypnotism and hypocrisy?
Ah NLP ni andar achah ne, ke ame tamay lokon ne suggestion aapye, explanation aapye, understanding aapye. Ane pachi NLP ni andar jare practicals kariyane, jare follow tamare self, ane. Reprint, re mind ni andar re imprinting je karvanu chah, ne self leak karvanu chah, tamare pote karvanu chah. Itle hamra me tamne kedu tamay vichar ho, pasi tamne kedu me bijju vichar ho, pasi hu tamne. Iske bed memory aapre delete kariye, toh tamay aavri te karo, toh bed memory delete tha, toh NLP such chah ke. Ennu je neuroni je language chah, ema je changes karvana chah, i tamare pote karvana chah. Amem lokon tamne ek master tarika suggestion desu, biji vache hypnotism, hypnotism chah ne ek trans ni awasta chah. Eh state of trance, itle jahagrat awasta ma chah, pasi ardo jahagrat awasta chah, ane hypnotism ne little bit different awasta chah. Trans ni awasta chah, toh eni andar manas no man je hoy chah, eh jeene hypnotize karechah. Itla koi be mentor ke jebi person chah, ena command ma jatore, itla subconscious, aapru mind chah ne kare sutu na thi. Aapre janmya, tyaati vada organ kam karechah, mind aapra matas super kam kare. Super reactive, super sensitive, and super functional vastu chah, and super receptive. Tamare duniam na kai banela tarat khabar, bakul bhai khabar padhi tamne, bakul bhai ke bhai mane betran phoon aaviyeh. Itla super receptive chah, ane khaton anda javiyeh, kaktir ek TV chalu kare, incidently, ane ane important samachar fraction of second ma muli jai. Toh aapru mind jechah, ye subconscious mind chah, man ninety percent vastu jechah aapra body ne manage karechah. Aapre feelings ne manage karechah, aapre actions ne manage karechah, toh ye subconscious mind no je command chah. Eh hypnotist ni passa jatore, hypnotism awasta ma, trance awasta ma, ane triji chah hypnosis therapy. Jo NLP chah ne, ehu jechah hypnosis therapy, par eni andar hypnotist tamne transform lay jai ne pasi therapy karechah. Itle eh NLP thi thodu kargat evi vastu chah ke karek manas pote potan ni jate change na thi karisa. Dakla tarike amare wine chhodi deho chah, amare cigarette chhodi devi chah, amare guzzo chhodi deho chah. Toh main NLP thi prayog kare, aapren ghani vara mane na thi, toh toh. Toh hypnotist lokon emne transform lay jai chah, ane pasi emne command aapre chah, toh hypnotiza. No state me tamne kedu ke manas utto ena skora bolau, toh ene pascha aap hello ke haath ucho karo, toh haath ucho kare. Pascho naskora bolau, toh bolau, toh ke ke tamay a a incident kare banyo, toh pascho isal jawab aapre. Ane ikaise ke tamay gaao, toh tamay ja je jahagrat awasta ma gata hoy, enti better awasta ma gayi sakho. Itle tamaru potential chah ne, i vada re bar aavech, itle hypnotist therapy eh ritakarag chah.
Toh trance actually, trance itla ek state of mind chah, ode trance.
trance state of mind na thi, stand toh tamaru state of mind jahagrat awasta ma kaisa ke khush se dukh dukhi chah.
Kepala hypnotist trance ma lay jai.
Trance ma lay jai, itle vasikaran, eh aapru desi language vasikaran, jepar ne aapru vasikaran na thi keta, par. Ah tantravastam.
Tantravastam.
Tantravastam, nindraavastam ma lay jai chah, em kevai, paran nindra na nindra ma farach chah.
Ah ha ha, barabat, yeah, I think a, kiri bani comment, per je quantum ne baat kene, just a. Quantum, it's also called quantum entanglement.
Okay, move physics no, eh thodu dikma na thi baat kari, kanke maate tamne hi samjau, hatu ke aapre mind ane body. Universe saate itla jaberjashriti jodaila chah, ke vaata varan ni andar aapre kai vichariye, boliyeh, samjhier, sambariyeh, vartiyeh. Eni bhana dunia ne vagar kide padijay chah, eh vadi je te dunia ni, brahman ni, vastu ni, vichar ni, vaani ni, vyakti ni, aapne par khabar padijay chah. Ena matte me quantum theory tamne psychological bhaasa ma samjha.
Aapre NLP language ne baat kari, right programing mind program, toh era thi aapru nature. Ke vritte badli sakay aapre with the knowledge of NLP and practice.
Itle ah nature badalva matechan ek toh pehli vastu me tamne samjavi thi ke ke tamay kena par focus karoch. Par mani lo ke tamare koi habits bana vichah, nature is the set of habits, I can say, right? Tamari passa katli katli habits tamay ah bana vichah, paadi posi raha chah, na pati tamaru nature bant hoy chah. Ke ghana lokon bolay toh ussaati bolay chah, welcome kare, toh ghana ghana lokon ne moda jagwan ni adat chah. Ghana lokon ne hard work matlab ene easy lagichah, toh ena matechan tamay eno. Saritte tamay plant, nature ma badlavam matechan ne, tamare feelings ne scan karvi boh jaruri chah. Tamay vicharta hoy ke tamaru nature aaprakarmo ho joey, toh i prakarn na nature ma tamari memories ma tamari thought pattern ni andar change karva joey. Ane a je unwanted things chah, na matte je hurdle chah, toh aapre ene delete karva joey. Ave aapre generally au karta joey chah, parant toh NLP thi khubaj hundred times better vritte thaich.
Good, okay, a chat box ma type karta re jo koi ne kai ehu laagay, anilam man puchse, ya number, ta I will have number. Ane ane barat bhai joey ya US ma farta chah, di kiarak aapne ulak chah jare na. Aa yoga ma yoga ma jod desu.
Arre Mumbai ma aistoy, tamne jawab aapis, mane laa, a gyan piyasvanu chah, tamay chinta ne karta.
Okay, toh um yaatle pustar ejo neti ramna mara question pura thiz, sadanavneet yaoyam. Anyway, oh yaadi aapre yo, yo nindra par ena ve pramana aapre karvani chah.
Ne tamari ne mari simil darachah, karu super.
Toh toh we koi very good tip ke aapre better communication to maintain better relationship. So how to communicate properly, best way, some tips.
Okay, itle communication ma pachas taka toh mari pala purva bhumi ka ma javi giu. Par communication ni andar ehu chah, ke aapre start karva karta pala bijan ne start karva de, ne toh strateji aapre ek toh khabar padijay.
Okay.
Ha itla aayal low karri aapchi, jo ene start karva de, toh aapre eni ek strateji khabar padijay. Bijjo aapru observation je tu powerful ho se, itle aapre enu meaning ke enu su thoughts se, enu su keva mangay chah. Ya aapne boh saritte sabjai jase, beti better communication matte cool and kam, ane patience vastu ek boh vastu jaruri chah. Ane amu communication ni andar such chah ke mismatch tu hoy, toh time ne ni par ek boh better dhava chah. Ke aapre koi ni saate mismatch hoy, aapre communication matte boh better try karta hoy. Toh mo good deed par se communication ni andar kam lagahta hoy chah, thought pattern chah na ma mukhyar sathii vada re important chah.
Ama ek vastu hoyad kaiske, okay, ato chat box, I want to open karu ju. Um, how to use NLP training in parenting young kids? Let's hold that question, um, je hu keva jata toh, hamra je vaat kari ne. Ke best thing, long time ago I learned is, to become a better communicator, you must be a good listener. That's the number one thing, agree or not? You, you must be a best listener, in order to become best communicator. And eh ya kadat, I don't know, who tamne bolva days, ne man khabar na thi, par hu ehu manu su. Ke hu lokon samalva try karu su, enough, enough samalva try karu su, ane vachya, chance mala jare ehu bolu su, bolva days, khabar ne, I don't know, you guys agree or not? Ehu hu manu su, anyway, a question ato ke, ah how to use NLP training in parenting young kids?
Yes.
Young, young, I don't know how young, I don't know how young you guys talk. Yeah, ke eh are they, um, are they grown enough to understand? Like in regular communication or like we talking about teenagers or we talking about the. Itle jigna jigna hoy, yeah, okay, so I don't need to ask, I will say about eight or seven to eight years.
Ah seven to eight years se, eh ne toh aapre hamra toh samjau joey, athva tamme joey ne NLP na practicals hu tamne karavi. Eh tamme pote par karavi sabso, itle jare tamme NLP na practical toh chopra one mani lo guzzo aavech. Ke ena kam ni andar re regular chah, ke eh lokon matlab suke rigidly behave karechah. Ke aapre believe na thi karta, respectful na thi, ke koi addicted companies ni andar ye lokon rechah. Toh aapre ne generally explanation aapru boh khubaj saritte detta hoy chah, parant toh tamne je practice, practical aapre karu su. Toh you all can do easily, itle tamay a jara ama thoda dikma jashoh, toh hu etlu saral vritte samjau manguchu. Ke tamay vada par na kam karisa.
Yes, we can definitely try and that would be awesome if we can even like seven, eight year age ma par aapre, eh lokon ne aapre healthy. Ane do NLP use karavi sakta hoy toh, ah so by waganey, I have tried experience hypnotized several times, but during session. Ke no he start losing, um, the instruction, ke the instructor, instruction chalti hoy. You know, he, he don't listen anymore, he just probably fall in asleep or whatever. Itle eno karan chah ke. How not to, his question is, ke anything you can suggest on how to improve focus? Or to become a big listener during that session?
Ennu karan chah aapre multitask ek saate kariyeh chah, itle jare aapne focus karvanu hoy. Focus means su ke ekaj vastu ni chindvan karu, baki ne vastu ni file ban karidho. Toh eh aapne pote jeeno improvement karisa ke, eni hamare passa dava na thi tamara focus ni. Parant toh we can suggest you ke when you are going to focus something, toh tamare baki na vada vicharo ban karva joey. Itle a je suggestions follow na thi, jata suggestions ma break thay jai chah, enu karan chah tamay bija thought start karidho.
Yaatle best thing, aapre ek ek instruction ma aapre lursi, aapre yobni draupunho honko gochu. Ke em ke kevay tamme aterak grass par chali raya chah, eva khatte aapre grass nu jo visualize no kariu, aapre buli gya. Toh that means ke we are start going off track, start, starting, let's start point. Second instruction aavi, eva khatte we are probably little bit further, I'm just telling my way.
Arre tamne other example.
Make sure you just follow all the instructions.
Tamne samjau, pancho ter mile ni speed aapre gaadi drive karri raya chah. Aapru mind toh thousands of kilometers si speede drive karechah, ane aapre eh pancho ter mile ni speed ma. Aapre aju baju joha jaiye, toh su tha, same way.
Bijju, it was some tip to live life like, ekdam cheerful, jevan jeva matte kam. Gamme jare gamme teu pelu hoy, toh aapre andar bijdo dabavi ni bar, toh aapre lokon ne, aapre khushal ma jreho.
Eh ena mati aapre pelu. Awe ena mati re dabau. Waat karu, par vada jana chah, parant toh ene implement karva ni vaat chah, baki gyan ne toh vada hoy chah, kanke aap marati vada eshi liyachah. Parant toh cheerfully jeva matte, oh, kelly vaat toh aapne chane, vichar chane, ene aapre aapru goal such. Ek toh jevan ni andar goal ni priority rakvi joey, bijdo timeline set karvi joey. Triju aapre a world upar chane, va world na flat na farm na bangla na malik na thi, we are traveler. Toh aapre, we are honor for some little bit period, toh aapne khabar chah vadu. Parant toh aapre ye aapra mind ni andar a baysari devanu chah, late go ke vritte karu. Ke ghana lokon aapre jevan ni andar evi vadi ghatna ho banechah, toh life ek sug dukh nu package chah. Toh ghana lokon maris saate jau kem banechah, bija saate kem bantu na thi, toh eni saate bane, eh ena time ne bane, aapra time ne na bane. Aapre vichar ye time ne duniam na vadi vastu na thi, tati, je aapre aapra routine kamon kariyeh, em obviously we have absolute command. Parant toh jare aapne amu kamon hoy vaat hai chah, ke koi family ma thi miss thaygi, aapre death thay gayi. Koi ne evi bimarri avi gayi, which is uncurable. Toh eh time chah ne understanding vastu tamne khubaj bahar aapre chah, and tamay koi par vik par stithi ni andar par. Positively thinking karay, ane par stithi ne better banaish sakho chah. Ena matte hu tamne saras ma jaa no example aapu, ke ogre so panchasitir ni vaat chah. Ab bihar no ghalor gam ni andar ek dasrat maji naam na khet majur ni a vaat chah. Khet majur upar tran picture bani gayi chah, ane khet majur ne khub ahod ma li gya chah. Toh khet majur ne, eni patni ati falguni devi, i parvat upar ye lokon kheti karta, da pani no problem ato. Thadu ko khub ato, ane two na nu gambo ziro infrastructure hatu, eh time mahaji. Ahamra sudhi toh vigiligram yojana tha, jare panch horas pe lagamo ma light tarvi, andar na kam ho ma. Toh aapne samjaiye ke pacha site horas pala su halat asah, toh i khet majur ne, patni falguni devi parvat par thi padi gayi. Ane khub severe injuries ne karan eh ne, je hospital lehijavan hotu, toh eno parvataadho hoto toh. Eksodas meter lambo parvata toh, ane ida das meter ucho parvata toh. Itle eh eh parvat par thi, ane koi rasthoy ni andar haton ne bada stone sata. Itle ene patni ne cycle par baysari, ane dur dur sudhi badani sarkar thi ne ek khub. Khubaj muskeli jana par stithiye, te lokon hospital ne pancha, ya sudhi ma falguni devi ne death thaygi thi. Aavai ghatna baniya pashi, khet majur su karisa ke, rova shivai kai karisa ke. Koi ne passa suggestion main toh janiye, gaadke mutana, aani thought ne death aaway.
He 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 definitely lose is.
He can think positive, biju ke karisa ke, positive thinking shivai kai karisa ke. Dasrat maji esu kariu, chini ane athodo li do, ane parvat ni torch upar panchi gya. Parvat ni torch upar thi, ane nissan line dhori karta karta niche aavya. Ane gam badai kedu ke tu asu karechah, keti no dhundo chhodi di do, khavan na vanda chah toh. Ane kedu ke mara aap parvat kapi na pochah, arre badai kedu ke aad saadi tronso. Foot lambo parvat, aatlo ba panchis, triis foot ucho parvat, ane aame gam badat ne madad na thi karvanu, you are really bad. Ema koi doubt na thi, toh i hasto toh, eh dasrat maji ke mane mer kainay ye lokon astata, hu ye lokon ne mer kainay asto toh. Satat, rojni pander sattar kalat ni chini ne chisel ane hemar, be vastu ne trijo dasrat maji. A tran janae mali ne bhaavis varas ni andar, i parvat ni andar aat meter broad. Ane ten meter nine, nine meter depth, ane one hundred and ten meter long. Ve bana vio, fifty five kilometer nu distance, fifteen kilometer saighi. Ane eni eni etli praising mali, ane anetla awards vali, ane tran bhaasa ni andar eni film badi, kavita bhen tali padechah.
Eh kayu movie khabar na?
Dasrat maji.
Oh, okay, no, I never heard that story.
Ane ane, parvat jeu mano badu, parvat ne, parvat nu raday phadi na ke. Etlu jaberjash mano badu, dasrat maji nu hatu, toh ene chinta hoy avi patni jati re, eklo thay kiyo gam badai gando ki do khavan na vanda. Par eni paschal film industry padi gayi, ane mukhyamantriya invite karyo, itle aapri andar ni je vastu chah, ne uja garapre ke vritte kariyeh. Ena upar te aapne aanand malti hoy chah.
Right, right. Yeah, there is a, there is a Hindi movie, Manji the mountain man.
Yes, yes, mountain man kevai chah, right.
Oh, okay, okay, good, good, so so basically, you just forget about what, what sorrow you have. You just focus on one thing and you and you you just focus on your work basically. Great, ek question jaya ke how can we decide, are the issues psychological, depak polra. Ke kai, kai issue hoy amu type no, from confusion issue, itla how can we decide whether it is just like regular? Thing or it is something to with the psychological?
Issue nu ehu chah ne ke issue ne definition aapre ya tere sixty six lokon chah ne, toh eni hundred definition avey. Issue ni, itle issue ne priority, issue ni importance, issue ni depth, issue nu harm, i aapre na thi karta hoy chah. Ghana lokon manva sukhit, ghana lokon manva ready na thi ke I am very happy, I am very rich. I am, I have enough stuff to like live happily, the ghana lokon ready na thi, ke na na na, mane toh boh prashna chah, toh ene tamay. Tamis su karisa.
Le no solution.
Bijju, they're, they're, one with, and the way, they're so many people have habit to enjoy the painful situation. Toh a jani name sikta ta ne toh bata ucha thay gya, ke painful situation enjoy karvanu. La saray badan ke toh beshi jao, chane samalvai chapter pachi puchho, itla bata bata boh puchho, ma toh varad na yo. Ke painful situation enjoy karvanu kona man hoy, toh sahibe amne samjai hu. Ke aapre every time painful situation enjoy kariye, arre tyaare hu jare India ma aton ne. Tyaare mane, mane, tamara family ni andar aavai, etli vadi mari patat thoki na ke, klob vada mane heran heran karay na ke, toh. La aapre jare maliyeh ne ke kem chokandi, hove hu saro chupar, tyaare hu India ma bahut dukhi hoy, toh India ma mane chane. Itle enu focus chah ne, i vastu par enu jaturiu chah, i focus aapre ene, India ma par khub sari vastu bani thi. Ke India ma thi aapre ke achieve karelu, toh ya aapre sudhi aavi sakya chah. Itle a je aapre issue chah ne, ninety percent aapra psychosomatic problems chah. Khato deeno problem chah, ke manno problem a toh bhigo, psychosomatic problems chah. Ninety percent of the problem nu ninety percent of the solution aapna potana hatma hoy chah. Toh ei karep par koi ne ehu thatu hoy, toh main eh ek taxi driver hato, mane Hyderabad ni andar. Mu ko avelo, toh ne ne tranvar suicide ni trial kare liyati, ane maris saate hu. Ah Arno no, kalu chah na, Arnold Swar, Arnold Swar Janegar. Ha Arnold Swar Janegar nu ek video joto, toh toh mane. So I said, sir, what are you doing? I am doing business. No, sir, you should watch the better video. Speak in the speaker. You should watch the better video. I think you should do it. I talked about what is the job. Because I am in America. I tried to kill him. I have a lot of severe problems. Any way. If India is there. Any way. A dependent visa canceled. So this is. I don't know. But you are similar to God. It means that I have not done anything. Any thought process pattern changed. And you should focus on it. It means that you should focus on it. We are very capable. We have enough stuff to do so many things. However, if you understand your issue. That might not be issue. We will discuss and we can solve them.
My understanding from this response is. I am doing this case by case. I am not doing a lot. It is kind of case by case. It is like gray area. I am.
Directly. Directly. Different kinds of level. However, if you are. If you are special. You should talk personally. It is.
Yes, I was just saying shortly that issue sometime could be an opportunity for us to learn it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It depends how we take it. Some people. I have everything. You are a student. We are putting paper. So you should use paper. A little cement. You should use it. You should use it. And we are complaining. I am going to kill you. It depends how we take it. Okay. So after that, a question is. You should not be a pure. You should be a pure. Let's start. You should know. You should know. But directly. You should know. You should know. And after that, you should be tough. You should be strong. Actually, you are not. You are not. How we get out of it? And how we the same ourselves not to get that kind of feeling?
I am English. I am a grudge.
Yeah.
Grudges. You should be grateful. It means that grudges are always there. You should be conscious. You should not be. You are a pure. You should be grateful. But you should keep a satchel. However, if you have feelings. In any sense, you want painful feelings. Constantly repetition. And you should constantly repeat it. Habit creates. Constantly repetition. Or you should be a little bit. So you should be conscious. If you are a little bit. I remember. But in the picture, you have gestures. Music. So this type of incident, I wanted painful. I went. So my mind is deeply saved. And this is your time. If you are a hint. If you are a little bit. You should be a pure. A pure. It means that you should keep it. What is the thing? I have a lot of pain. It is a misunderstanding. You are not really painful. So a pure. You should be grateful. Constantly repeating. If someone is giving a joke. Or if someone is cheating. We should say that we are not paying. We are not singing. We are not. We are not. I am white. I am cheating. I am not knowledgeable. I am innocent. So you should be a little bit. And you should be a little bit. What is a cheating? So you should be cheating. I was a year old. In the year. I was a little bit. And I was angry. I cheated. I am glad. I am happy. I am not. I am not. I am not. I am not. So this is. A pure. There is a question. To delete a pure. To generalize. It is not necessary. Because you should not be alive. Your thing is mind. Painful things stored. You are lost. Like this. If you cheat. So you should do it. You should wait for years. You should be lazy. So you should be progressive. You should be. But you should not be happy. You should save the bad things. It means that you should open your computer. Open your laptop. Save everything. Your memory is full. After that, you should not write anything. But God has given us an 8GB memory. And 56 trillion. You should not be lazy. How much memory is there? So you should be generous. You should do it. I understand. It means that you should be generous. We should give you a gift. We should not let you. We should not give you.
You should eat. You should eat. You should save it.
You should be a little bit. Because you should be a little bit. Your time has changed. You should respect. You should be respectful. You should speak to people. But you should not change. Understanding. So even if you are a little bit. But we are for that. Give an example. I am not late.
Well, late. So we are. Youth. I wish to have youth right now. Continue. Continue.
Thank you, Rasilev. And Subby. An example. I have a friend. Years ago. A friend. Academic. Knowledge. A little bit. A little bit industrialist. Years ago. Industrialist. In the city. A classmate. He is going to go. It means that he is going to go. No, he is sitting. He is very attentive. So basically, he is a friend. He is busy. The company owner is very busy. Then observe. Start. It means that I am going to marry. I am going to marry. It means that I am late. It means that I am late. I am going to tell you. Information. You are late. You are going to marry. What is it? I am angry. It is a great. After that, I was angry. I drank coffee. I am going to drink coffee. I am ordering coffee. After that, I drank coffee. I am not going to drink. Because I am a good friend. I drank coffee. I drank coffee. I drank coffee. I drank information. My friends. Years ago. We were talking about each other. Four, four times. I was angry. I drank information. I am angry. I drank coffee. I am relaxed. I am asking my friends. I am asking you. What is it? I am going to turn over my company. I am going to turn over 500 crores. How many employees? 15,000 employees. So who is the main manager of the company? So what is the manager? Do it. Ah, the manager. What is the command? Who is the manager? Who is the manager? The manager. I am going to do it. A doctor. You are a Brahman. I am not managing. You are managing. You are going to marry. Tell us. It is a question. You should be angry. You are going to marry. I am going to marry. I am going to marry. I am happy. I am happy. It means that you should. You should do it. You should do it. You should not manage. So you should be a little bit. You should think. I am going to marry. I am going to marry. But you should manage. You should do it. Press.
You should control. 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 You should control. You should do it. No, that was great example. Yes.
Bharat Bhai, my question is. If somebody is going through cancer. And a cancer patient. How can you help? That makes their life a little bit cheerful. I am going to do it. Can you help? How can you change?
Yes, it is interesting. There are a lot of things. Because I am 10% incurable thing. It is a problem. Because you should not cancel. But it is rare. I am not saying anything. However, happy feelings. Obviously, you should easily enjoy it. It means that you should fight. You should fight. You should talk. You should remember. A type of treasure. You should remember. Remember. What is the benefit? Your mind is. Your mind is. You should close your files. Your mind is crazy. Crazy. Crazy.
Crazy.
Crazy.
Crazy.
Yes. Crazy. In the mind. It is science. So you should do it. Do your hobbies. Do it. You should achieve. Do it. You should be happy. You should be happy. This is a moment. It is. Unfold. Unfold. So this is practice. With your memory. Power. Powerful. It means that people are young. When you are old. You should go. So you should do it. You are a farmer. I am going to eat 50 years old. So I think my memory is very good. But you should practice. You should do it. On the side. Topic. However, I am going to say that cancer. You should help. So you should help. Any hobby. Your interest. And your easiness. This is why I am with you. I am spending time. I am doing it. And you are also a pill. You should be happy. You should be happy. So in science, you should be happy. What is the taste? We have a lot of feelings. I don't know. Vitamin. I am a doctor. Doctor Deepak Vagani. He does not pay for a day. I am going to say that he is 100 rupees. He is 13. 20 rupees. 100 rupees. I am going to do 300. First. So he is my 100. I am not. I am not. But I am going to do it. Because we are average. I am going to do it. But I am going to say that I am not. I am going to ask you. I am going to ask you. I am going to say that I am not. I am not. I am not. I am going to say that I am not. I am going to say that. I am going to say that I am happy.
Nice.
I am happy. I am going to pay 10 rupees. 1000. I am going to pay. I am going to say that I am going to class. If you don't pay. I am going to say that I am a psychologist.
Most thing is related to the mental.
It means that you should use it.
Excuse me, Bakul Bhai.
Ah, Nilam. Say.
Hypnotism is. Alzheimer's. What is it?
No. Alzheimer's. So my mind is powerful. I am going to do it. It means that you should be happy. I am going to do it.
Yeah, my mom has that. But it is too bad. Alzheimer's disease.
और ये तो रिफॉर्म डेट पर तो मैं जारे लोगो सभा नवस्था मैं एक्सोलेट घणी अल्साइमर मा लेवल होइचे के अच्छा अल्साइमर इतना गांठ नहीं बात करे
गुड मेमोरी
मेमोरी मेमोरी
मेमोरी लॉस टाइप छे तो एम तो आपड़े अजे साइंस से एम एन अपोटाइज करवा नू होइचे तो नथी था सकतो अन्य लोग ने ट्रांसमा भी नथी ले जिसका ताए इतले बधू रिस्की होइचे परंतु तो मैंने हैप्पीनेस मा रखवा ना बड़ा बड़ा वर्णक वातो करवानी की बधू करी सको
बिजो एक क्वेश्चन आलो बिमल बाई पटेल नो क्वेश्चन
भाई कौन
अभी मिस्टर जैसी क्वेश्चन
जैसी
एक क्वेश्चन है तो खूबसूरत सरस उदाहरण तो मैं आपे आई थी मोस्ट ऑफ उदाहरण बताया वाटा के प्ला दृष्टि कॉन्ट रिलेटेड हो जी आपड़ा जीवन मा क्यों दृष्टि कॉन्ट रखे जी पर तमेशन एक वस्तु पर टच करी जी ब्रेन सेल्स पर वाद करी थी इतले हूं छे ना ईआई पर कम करू जो इतले हमें सुबह न्यूरल नेटवर्क मॉडल्स लिए अन्य पछी एन ने ट्रेन करिए इतले पछी ये ब्रेन जूज फंक्शन करे पर एम आई क्यों देखे तो मैं कंप्यूटर नहीं एनालॉजी जी आप ही ने एन रिलेटेड क्वेश्चन है वो देखे एक वक्त तब मैं न्यूरल नेटवर्क मॉडल मारे तो ये मॉडल एक वक्त प्रोग्राम थे लू होए तो पछी एम आई बिजा कोई चेंजेस ना था ये लर्न करी सके पर तो मैं जे ब्रेन सेल्स नहीं बात करी तो मैंने ये जानू तू के जो तो मैं रिसर्च करे छे तो एम आई हूं छे के नवा सेल्स तो मैं ऐड करी सको कारण के हमारा कंप्यूटर मा तो नवा सेल ना नखाई पर आपड़ा ब्रेन मा हूं करू के तो मैं के के भी पद्धति करो के जनाती नवा सेल्स बनी सके अथवा कोई जुना सेल्स होए जी आपड़ा न्यूरोन्स एक डी एक्टिवेट थी गया और डिसेबल थी गया हो तो ये भी कोई पद्धति खरीद के एन आप रीएनेबल करी सके
ओके वो तो मैं सेल नहीं बात करू की आपड़ा बॉडी नो पहला समझी ले के आपड़े बॉडी से सेट ऑफ सेल्स से तो दरेक सेल्स ने एक एक्सपेरी डेट होइचे तो दरेक सेल्स से ने डिस्ट्रॉय थता होइचे कोई वाला सौ रुपए बार आवे कोई ना सौ रुपए बार आवे कोई अलग लर्न वितरित लोगो सेंस बदा डिस्ट्रॉय थता होइचे इतले के मरी जता होइचे डेथ थती होइचे एन टाइम एनी जगह नवो सेल एक मरतो होइचे तेरे बिजो जन्म तो होइचे तो इस सेल्स रूपांतरण ने ट्रांसफरमेशन कहे सेल्स नो तो ट्रांसफरमेशन तत्व है जी धर्म ने अंदर जे जुनो सेल्स से ने इपो तानी मेमोरीज पोता नू कार्य पोता नी फीलिंग्स ए बद्धिज वस्तु जुन्ना सेल ने नवा सेल ने आप तो जाइचे आपड़ा मा सेल ऐड थता नथी आपड़ा मा सेल जे भी छे ये नाना हो तो नाना सेल से मोटा हो तो मोटा सेल से थोड़ा वत्ता सेल वत्ता जब पर हमके लिमिट हमके एज पछी सेल्स वत्ता वत्ता नथी परंतु आपड़े आपड़ी पास जे पास जे सेल्स छे एनी जे कैपेसिटी छे ये तो इतली बधी जबरदस्त छे के आपड़े नो आइंस्टाइन कहता हूं के आखी जिंदगी आंखों बधू बढ़ियो ने इनोवेशंस करिया तो हमारा माइंड नो मैं 20% पर उपयोग नथी करियो अबे आपड़ी कैपेसिटी नहीं बात करू के तो मैं जनरली दौड़वा जता आशो तो तो मैं कितला स्पीड से दौड़ो चौमित भाई रोज
आज माइल छह माइल स्पीड है दौड़िया तो थाकी जो आइचे
नहीं नहीं पर
स्वास्त्री जाय
यो कैपेसिटी तू रन ऑन सिक्स माइल्स पर ओवर राइट पछी तुम्हारी पचोर जोरदार कुत्रो पाचो पड़े तो कितनी स्पीड तो मैं स्ट्रेच करी सको इतले
मैक्सिमम मैक्सिमम कैपेसिटी है बद्धि जे आपड़ा कार्डी सकी जाय
इतले 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 माइंड आपड़े आपड़ी पास जे सेल्स से ने एन आपड़े वापरता नथी इतले जे लोग कोई आप इनोवेशंस करिया के सामने ये फैमिली मा जन्म ला था ओके अब्राम लिंकन पहला कहता तो मुझे प्रेसिडेंट था माटे जन्म जो हमारे प्रेसिडेंट था उसे बदा के गांडो छो तरह खावा प्यार तो तो कांस्टेंटली छुट्टी नहीं आरवा सिविन उतरो कम देन दो नथी तो एन 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 जे थिंकिंग पावर छे इतले सेल्स डेवलप करे लता
माइंड सेट
कारण के माय आहा एन एन माय एन माइंड सेट के अंदर तो मैं कहू जो हैप्पी स्टेट ऑफ माइंड आवे से स्ट्रेसफुल स्टेट ऑफ माइंड आवे छे एंग्री स्टेट ऑफ माइंड आवे छे जितनी फीलिंग छे इतना प्रकार ना स्टेट ऑफ माइंड साइज छे तो तो मैं डेवलप माइंड स्टेट ऑफ माइंड रखो तो मैं क्रिएटिविटी ने फोकस करता हो तो यू ओबवियसली कैन लूप सम क्रिएशन अन्य जे सेल्स से ये बदा रवानी बात ना देखा की यू हैव इनफ सेल्स तू लू एनीथिंग तो तो मैं एनेज पोता ने अन्य पास एक्टिव बधी समता हो छे कौशल्य छे सो पोटेंशियल ने तो मैं केविरीत आउट परफॉर्म करी सको ये तुम्हारे एन माटे फोकस करू जो है अन्य यू व्हेन यू फोकस यू विल डू बेटर
ग्रेट एक्सीलेंट अच्छा आपड़े ड्राइव नथी करे के पाचल सी है दौड़े के कुत्रो दौड़े परीक्षा तीन दिया हुई थी पर एक वस्तु जे के आपड़े आपड़े योगा डिरैट फ्रॉम रुग्वेद राइट अन्य रुग्वेद नुज अमीन या रुग्वेद माथी रुग्वेद नुज एक सूत्र जे का प्रस्लोक है आनो भद्रा गुरुत्व यंतु विश्वता के विश्वनी चारे चारे नहीं विश्वनी दरेक दिशाओ मा थी मने पॉजिटिव विचारो मारे डेट्स व्हाट इट मीन एन दस ही दिशा नथी के दे दरेक दिशा के दिशे कारण के दिशा खाली दस नथी दस दिशा ना तो नाम आपला असे का आपड़ा पॉइंट करिए के राइट चारे बाजू खुदा अन्य ऊपर नीचे पर बद्धि दिशाओ मा थे दुनिया नी के आपने सारा विचार आवे इतले हूं था शक्या माझे बात करिए क्या आपड़ा ब्रेन ने अंदर जे बले अब हमारी इतनी पिट कर दो
अरे अमित भाई नो अमित भाई ऑन करो ऑन
इतले हूं ये इंटरप्रेट करवा टाइप करू जो के जे हूं समझी इतना मारी थी जो
तो मैं अब जरा अमित भाई रबा बात करलो अब आपड़े टाइम नथी निप्ले
हां हूं ये 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 मारो आंसर लगता हो जो यू गो हर्ड फर्स्ट ओके यू गो हर्ड फर्स्ट आई विल आई विल रिमेंबर तू से
तो मैं एपीआई मा कम करो जो राइट
या ईआई ईआई आर्टिफिशियल इंटेलिजेंस मा कम करे
इतले राइट ओके तो आर्टिफिशियल इंटेलिजेंस ने एक लिमिट छे परंतु मानसे सेंसर टेक्नोलॉजी ने अंदर इनोवेशंस करिया करोड़ो किलोमीटर दूर मिसाइल्स मोकले सैटेलाइट मोकले तो यात्री सेंसर टेक्नोलॉजी थी एम ऑपरेट करी सके छे तो इतली बधी जबरदस्त सेंसर टेक्नोलॉजी सो दुआ पाचोड़न माइंड नो सेंसर के तू पावरफुल होसे एन तो तुमने कंधा विचार ले जो के मानस ना माइंड मा एवी के भी सेंसर टेक्नोलॉजी होसे क्या ने वो विचार आवे के हूं करोड़ किलोमीटर करोड़ो किलोमीटर दूर वस्तु दूर छे सैटेलाइट एंड आई विल ऑपरेट इट ओके
यस एक्सीलेंट अन्य हूं ये क्या बात जतो तो ये ये रिपोर्ट मारी बात दिखे आपड़े अन्य मैं स्लो जे एन के वर्ण पाचल कारण ये तो के आपड़े पहलू जे मशीन से ईआई डेट्स नथिंग बट मशीन नहीं आपड़े लाइफ ह्यूमन निवास करिया छे तो आपड़ा सेल्स ने बले आपड़े रिप्रोग्रामेबल के प्ला ना करे सकता है प्ला मा आप आपड़ कदा ना करे सकता है इतला तरीके पर आप जा पॉजिटिव विचारो बिजो पॉजिटिव थिंग नहीं इतले बधू आपड़ी अंदर आवी दे ने के वो लो ऑटोमेटिकली एनी इफेक्ट सब दूर थी जाए ये बले जा के आपड़ी वे पड़ी है आपड़े समझे लो के बले इंटीवायरस सॉफ्टवेयर वो इतला नदी बाबी रखे एक बधू बेतारे ऊपर आवा नथी कारण के आप रू इतलू बधी बिजी पॉजिटिव वस्तु आपड़ी अंदर आवी जाए के ऑटोमेटिक अन्य पछी आपड़े ये त्या होए तो ये आपड़े बोधन नथी करवा बिकॉज़ वी हैव सो मेनी अदर थिंग्स तू डू थिंक अबाउट डेट्स व्हाट आई इंटरप्रेटेड
इतले हमा कंप्यूटर आपड़ो जे अब दा तेरे जे नवी टेक्नोलॉजी जी छे ये तो मैं हम जो आजा ना तो इट इस एक्चुअली डिराइव्ड फ्रॉम ह्यूमन ह्यूमन इट्सेल जी तो मैं आई थिंक मेमोरी रैम नहीं बात करी हार्ड ड्राइव नहीं बात करी इफ यू सी आई थिंक डी एनालॉजी इस परफेक्टली फिटिंग फॉर डी ह्यूमन लाइफ
राइट
इतले तो मैं जे बिजी पढ़ बात करी देखले मारे क्वेश्चन एन वाटे जा तो कारण के घणी वाटा मैं तुली टेक्नोलॉजी जो है तो के हार्ड ड्राइव ने डी फ्रैकमेंट करता हो आय हार्ड ड्राइव ना हमके बेड सेल से ना क्योर करता है वास सॉफ्टवेयर बनाता हो आई वाज जस्ट ट्राइंग तू थिंक के मेबी कदा छे भी पद्धति कदा छोए के जे लाइक यू नो रिकवर्स डी सेल और लाइक यू नो क्योर्स डी सेल्स
ये सेंस मा बात करू के तुम्हारा जे अन एक्टिव सेल्स छे डी एक्टिव सेल्स से अन एक्टिव सेल्स से अन एक्टिव सेल्स से यू कैन एक्टिव बोथ ऑफ देम्स या या क्रिएट बाय रिस्पोंड एंड कंटेक्स्ट इन इंपॉर्टेंट इन ह्यूमन ब्रेन वर्सेस मशीन लैंग्वेज ओर इन आर्टिफिशियल इंटेलिजेंस और ब्रेन कैन अप्लाई डिफरेंट रूल्स आई जस्ट रीडिंग इन अन चैट
अमित भाई तो मैं कोई बेड कंप्यूटर बनाओ छो तो मैं एनी मेमोरी एनी कैपेसिटी ऑलरेडी तो मैं एन फीचर्स मा लखी ना छो मानस नी कैपेसिटी तो मैं लखी नहीं सको आपड़े वापरता नथी इतले आप ने अब लगे छे के कंप्यूटर पास बहु मेमोरीज से बहु पावर से बहु फंक्शन से परंतु ये फंक्शन तो आपड़ी पास एटीनी मैटर मा हो
इफ आई ऐड मोर वैन थिंग ऑन अमित इन इनफॉरमेशन के वी आर नॉट डेयर यर वी हैव आई विल गिव डी सिंपल वैन स्मॉल एग्जांपल इफ यू वांट तू ड्राइव एंड इफ यू सी डी रेड लाइक एंड ट्रैफिक लाइक यू विल स्टॉप बट इफ यू डू डी सेंथ थिंग इन न्यूयर्क और इफ यू गो इन इंडिया एंड डू समथिंग सो सी डी होल्स आर डी सेंथ बट कॉन्टेक्स्ट इस डिफरेंट इफ यू अप्लाई डी डिफरेंट कॉन्टेक्स्ट ह्यूमन ब्रेन कैन नॉट इजीली एंड अप्लाई दोस्त एंड एड दोस्त बिहेवियर्स बट मशीन और एमएल और ईआई राइट ना वी आर नॉट डेयर आई थिंक विल गेट डेयर इन ओवर लाइफ टाइम मेबी बट इट्स इट्स वी आर गेटिंग डेयर बट वी आर नॉट डेयर यर यू नो वी हैव विथ डी ह्यूमन इंटेलिजेंस हैसन मैट विथ डी ईआई इंटेलिजेंस यर
ओके
व्हाट्स डी मूवी गो इस अन वेरी गुड गेन राइट दिस अल्फा गो गूगल्स ग्रुप डी अल्फा गो एंड ऑल डी स्टार सो इफ यू व्हाट्स डेट इन ऑफ डॉक्यूमेंट्री हाउ दे लाइव दोस्त एमएल टू लर्न गेन बाय एक्सेल यू विल बे एबल तू नो लॉट मोर अन्य आई थिंक इस वेरी गुड थिंग एवरीबॉयज शुड बे ओपन तू लर्न दोस्त न्यू व्हाट व्हाट इस कमिंग इन फ्यूचर एंड विल गिव यू मोर एक्साइडमेंट इन योर लाइफ अलसो आई थिंक थिंग्स यू विल यू विल गेट तू डेयर बट आई थिंक वी आर नॉट डेयर यर इट विल गेट डेयर व्हेन वी हैव बियोटिप्स एंड ऑल डीस्टेंट थिंग्स बट राइट ना वो प्रोसेसिंग एंड वो पावर्स वी कैन नॉट वी कैन नॉट रिप्लेस डी ब्रेन पावर ऑल डी कंपनी पावर इन डी वॉल राइट ना विथ डी सिंपल वैन ब्रेन बिकॉज़ थिंक अबाउट डेट आई वियर्स चाल ब्रेन लर्न्स व्हाट अन लर्न्स यू कैन नॉट रिप्लेस डेट वन विथ डी ह्यूमन क्रिएशन एट दिस पॉइंट मेबी मेबी विल गेट डेयर डाउन डी रोड
क्रिएट भाई इतले हो तो मैं एन संदर्भ मा एक बात के हो मांगू जो के जिवरीत आपड़े सबकॉन्शस माइंड ने अंदर एक मानसिकता बने छे अन्य अंदर एक पावर लिमिटेशंस नो एक पार्ट छे के तुम्हारी पास ए पावर नी पन एक रेंज छे फ़ियर नी पन एक रेंज छे गुस्सा नी पन एक रेंज छे तो जारे तो मैं अमेरिका ना सिग्नल्स जो छो तेरे तुम्हारो सबकॉन्शस माइंड तुमने तरताज के सिग्नल तोड़ी तो आठला डॉलर फाइन छे टिकी तो मैं तरताज सबकॉन्शस माइंड नो कम सोचे हो तो मैं समझाऊ के तो मैं स्पीड मा जाय रहा छो अन्य अचानक यात्रा तो यू के गाड़ू आओ तो नथी तो मैं इंडिया मा स्पीड मा जाय रहा छो अन्य कुत्रो गाड़ू उतरी गयो अचानक तो तो मैं कॉन्शसली विचार रहे नथी के तो मैं ब्रेक मारवा ना छो पर ब्रेक लागी जाइचे स्टीयरिंग स्टीक या फटाटाई जाइचे ना गाड़ी उभी रही जाइचे तेरे तो मैं सुख क्यों अरे मारा थी सारो चु ब्रेक लागी गए तो मैं नथी मारी तो मैं सुख क्यों के सारो चु मारा थी ब्रेक लागी गए फ्रेंड रोज तो के सारो चु ब्रेक मारी तो क्या रे मारा थी लागी गए फटाक दिन बची गया तो एक वक्त छे ना सबकॉन्शस माइंड आवे छे सबकॉन्शस माइंड नो फंक्शन अन्य ये तरताज कॉन्शस माइंड ने अवेयर करे छे टिकिट माटे अवेयर करे छे अन्य इंडिया मा कैसे सिग्नल तोड़ी नाक ने या काही था तो नथी तू जवा दे ने इतले ये दरेक वस्तु आपने ऑपरेट करे छे सबकॉन्शस माइंड नो कम जो ऑपरेशन नो छे सबकॉन्शस माइंड बोलू छे सबकॉन्शस माइंड ने तो मैं जेपन कमांड आप सोते ले ले छे सबकॉन्शस माइंड ने हिप्नोटिज्म स्टेट ने अंदर बिजो मानस कमांड आपे तो एन भी कमांड ले ले छे कारण के बोलू छे ये अवेयर नथी कॉन्शस नथी एनी पास अमाप शक्तियो छे पर जिवरीत कंप्यूटर से बोलू छे कंप्यूटर मा कीबोर्ड पासवर्ड नखी दो अन्य पछी तो मैं कंप्यूटर ना कोई पन फंक्शन यूज़ करी सको ये टेक्नो सबकॉन्शस माइंड छे इतले फ़ियर पार्ट ऑफ दिस अपना एक्ट आगरी थे छे के तो मैं हमको कम करता डर लगे हमको कम करता आनंद लगे ये तुम्हारी जे पैटर्न छे अबे घना लोगो मारे नियम तोड़ो हो नथी तो इंडिया मा हो के अमेरिका मा नियम नहीं तोड़े अन्य घना के आपड़े इंडिया मा मान दो नी तो ये आपड़ी पैटर्न ऊपर छे
राइट 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 राज्य भाई के छे के सबकॉन्शस माइंड छे ये अलादिन छे अन्य सबकॉन्शस माइंड छे ये अम ये प्लो आपड़े ना प्लो कौन छे
कौन जा सिंसिंग
जीन जी 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 जे ना अलादिन छे ना आने आने ला ओपा छे अमाप शक्ति छे कोई एनी लिमिटेड नथी अन्य आने खाली एटलिस्ट के वानो छे और कर पे ये ने खाली ओर्डर्स करवानो छे ना बोलो तरताज प्रकट था जाए बोलिए मेरे आका
नहीं ना
अमा अमा अलग छे
अमा अमा अलग छे आपड़ा माइंड नो कंट्रोल छे ने सबकॉन्शस पास छे इतले अमा अलाव दिन पास नथी अमा कंट्रोल जीन पास छे पर आपड़ा माइंड ने अंदर खाली जीन ने रिलेटेड नथी बहु सारी फीलिंग्स ने सारी बात छे
आ तो बोलो छे ने तो बोलो कम करा कर
नहीं नहीं ना कॉन्शस माइंड ना कम नथी कॉन्शस माइंड छे एम आपने मेमोरीज आपड़े ने अनफोल्ड करिया बधू करी सके छे आपड़े नो लाभ ले
sense of well being के आपड़े चेन आपड़ी प्रकार पासे घणी पदि प्रकार में सेंस है परंतु तमारे अमेरिका में जो थैंक्सगिविंग नहीं इट इज अ लिटिल बिट पार्ट ऑफ सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग के आपड़ी पासे कितनो बधि सारे वस्तु छे विजय करता सारो घर छे, विजय करता सारा फ्रेंड्स छे, रिलेटिव्स छे, सारा पैसा छे, सारे सोशल कंडीशन छे, इकोनॉमिकल कंडीशन छे एंड कितना बदा आपड़ा कैपेबल छी है तो पर आपड़े क्या रहे द तमे थैंक यू क्यों छो तो तमे फ्रेंड्स ने, रिलेटिव्स ने, मेंटर्स ने, गुरु ने, भगवान ने, पेरेंट्स ने थैंक्स क्यों छो परंतु आपड़ा बॉडी ओर्गन ने आपड़ा थैंक्स नथी कहता के तमे एटी ईयर्स सुधि मने हार्ट मारो प्रॉब्लम नथी आएगो, मारा नीज़ ने प्रॉब्लम नथी अथवा होए तो पर आपड़े पॉजिटिव रखवानू के वधारे प्रॉब्लम नथी एन सेल्स ऑफ वेल बीइंग के भाई तो तमे आजे आपड़े हो तमने आजे कराऊं दो आज जरा जॉइन करी दूंचू योग निंद्रा नी अंदर तमने जरा आनू बैकग्राउंड तमार योग निंद्रा मा काम लेवन मुझे आज आपड़े थैंक्सगिविंग मा तो तमे लोकों ने कहवा ना छो पर सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग नी अंदर तमे आजे प्रयोग करता जो के आपड़ी पासे आठली बधि वस्तु सारी होवा चाहता या पढ़ खुश कैम नथी रही सकता तो आपलो डिप फोकस दे जाई छे हैप्पीनेस ऊपर थी अने वेल बीइंग सेंस उछी छे अथवा आपड़े रखता नथी, अथवा आपड़े रखवी नथी अथवा आपड़ी सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग छे नहीं, डेवलप करवा नी छे तो आपड़े अभी योग निंद्रा करिए जरे तमे सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग तमे तो समझी गया शो बदा के केविरीते करवानू तो तमे सारा विचारो करवा ना के आपड़ी पासे आठली बधि सारी वस्तु छे के मानन नथी आऊ तो आनंद तो आपड़े होवो जोया बधि वस्तु आपड़ा पासे अधिक छे तो बकुल भाई ने तो कितनो अधिक आनंद छे कारण के अधिक आनंद देखले छे के अपनी पासे ये आनंद ना पटारा खोलवा विजने लोकों ने माटे बेटर कैम करू विजने इजीनेस कैम करवी पैना काम मा हाथ कैम बढ़ाओ तो आपड़ा जे थॉट प्रोसेस नी अंदर जे नोबल थॉट्स छे नहीं ये आपने खूब आनंद आपे छे एंड जिंदगी मा घणा बदा लोको आपना माटे खूब बधू सारो कार्य करियो छे नहीं तो तमे थैंक्स कैसो ये भी रीते तमारा बॉडी ओर्गन जे छे सौथी मोटी गिफ्ट सु छे के आपड़े आजे जीवता छी इन्हीं मोटी कोई गिफ्ट नथी एकले तो प्रेजेंट ने, एकले तो करंट टाइम ने प्रेजेंट टाइम के हो मगर चिकार प्रेजेंट छे कारण के पास ने तो आपड़े हिस्ट्री कहया छे, ना फ्यूचर ना आपड़े मिस्ट्री कहया छे पर टुडे वी अप्रेजेंट कारण के आपने भगवान ने अप्पू बधू अप्पू छे तो सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग ना हमें उसे कर्षू एंड थैंक्सगिविंग मा आपन सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग उसे करता रही
जस्ट सो लेट्स गेट रेडी फॉर क्विक योग निंद्रा आई डोंट नो हो लोंग प्रोबेबल शॉर्ट जे आपड़े योग निंद्रा थे छके
लोग अभी आपड़े टुकमा कराऊं सु चलो
ओके
आपड़े आपड़े 10, 12 मिनट मा आपड़े योग निंद्रा करिए 15 मिनट थाई तो वांदा नहीं चलो वांदा टुकमा कर सु दे जो थे
चलो विल विल लेडाउन
अरे सुत्ता पहला तमे बदा तमारी लाइट डीम करी दे जो अथवा बंद करी दो तो ये वांदा नथी
यस एंड यू कैन कवर योरसेल्फ, कवर डी बॉडी दस रूटेड देनो
ओके नाना कवर करवानी के जरूर नथी लाइट बंद करी दो चाल से कवर करो तो वांदा नहीं, नहीं करो तो वांदा नहीं, लाइट ऑफ करी दो एंड मारा सजेशंस तमारे बराबर सारी ते सांभड़वाना छे एंड मारा सजेशंस नी साथे जय भाई तमे सुवानी मुद्रा मा तो अभी जब लाइट ऑफ करी नहीं के डीम करी दो, के ऑफ करी दो
सो लेट्स लेट्स लाइट डाउन इंक्रीडिंग बीइंग
यस यस
एंड लेट
आपड़ी लाइट बंद
लेट बरद भाई हैंडल द सेशन आई एम अलसो विथ यू गैस
अजी हां बरद भाई मेंदप्रा तमे सुवाना छो ओके क्लोज योर आइस एंड आपड़े माउथ ले अने तो सुधि शरीना दरेक पार्ट्स ने आपड़े रिलीज़ करवाना छे, स्ट्रेस रिलीज़ थाउ जय एंड क्लोज योर आइस एंड सॉरी सॉरी ओपन योर आइस, ओपन योर आइस एंड तमे चेन तमारा सेलिंग ऊपर सेलिंग ऊपर 45 डिग्रीज नहीं आजू बजू तमे कोई पॉइंट्स ने जो नो स्टेर करवानू स्टार्ट करो 45 डिग्रीज आजू बजू तमे कोई एक पॉइंट डिसाइड करो एंड यू शुड स्टार्ट तू स्टेर इट तमे ये पॉइंट नी समय फोकस रखो एंड लिटिल बिट डिप ब्रीथिंग स्टार्ट करो स्लोली डिप ब्रीथिंग करो एंड पॉइंट में तमे फोकस करता रो मू कहूं सु ज्यादा सुधि तमे पॉइंट में फोकस करवानू चालू रहा जो फोकस करवानू चालू रहा जो जरे तमारी आयली आयली दी अंदर हेल्पीनेस आवे त्यारे आपड़ा आयली बंस कराऊं आइस बंद कराऊं सु ओके नाउ स्लोली क्लोज योर आइस स्लोली क्लोज योर आइस एंड कंटिन्यूड डिप ब्रीथिंग एंड तमारो जे भी फोकस ध्यान छे की तमारा बन्ने पग्ना टोस नी ऊपर तमारो ध्यान केंद्रित करो तमारा मू एक्ति पांच गणो सु दे धर्मयन तमारी पग्नी बधि आंगड़ियो तमारा पग्नो फुट एंड एडी ये रिलीज़ ससे तमारे जे आपड़ा माइन ना विचारो चालू होई त्यारे आपड़ी बॉडी स्टिफ होई छे परंतु जरे आपड़े शुभ होई छे, त्यारे आपड़ा बॉडी पार्ट्स छे ये स्ट्रेस रिलिक्ट हो जय एकले के आपड़ा विचारो बंद थवा छे, बन्ने साइमांटेनेसली ऑटोमेटेकली वैसा वर्षा काम धत्तू होई छे तो यू इमेजिन के तमारा फुट एंड फिंगर्स मू एक्ति पांच गणो तो एक्ति पांच नी साथे एकदम रिलीज़ दे रहा छे एंड तमे भी माइन मा काउंट करी सको छो एक रिलीज़ वत्तू जसे दे यू कैन काउंट विथ मी नो प्रॉब्लम पर यू टू फोकस इट योर टोस ना 3 4 5 ओके अभी तमारो जे फोकस छे ये तमे नी पर लाओ एंड तमे इमेजिन करो के तमारा पोस्टी ले अने नी सुधि ना मसल्स छे, टिश्यू छे, एवरी सेल्स छे ये दरेक एकदम रिलैक्स दे रहा छे एंड विल स्टार्ट काउंट, यू शुड काउंट विथ मी 1 2 3 4 एंड 5 10 अभी तमारो फोकस छे, ते तमे कवर सुधि ले आओ एंड लेट्स स्टार्ट काउंटिंग 1 2 3 4 5 धीरे-धीरे तमारो बॉडी रिलैक्स दे रहे हो छे एंड तबने आराम नौ भौत है रहे हो छे जरे जरे रीते आपड़े ऊपर आउट जसू तेम तेम तमने एकदम रिलैक्स सेशन मा एक्सपीरियंस बत्तो जसे अभी तमारो जे फोकस छे तमे ऊपर पेट ऊपर एंड छाती सुधि तमे फोकस रखो पेट की छाती सुधि नो भाग होवे आपड़े रिलैक्स दे छे 1 2 3 4 5 अभी आपड़े बेक नो भाग छे, कमर दे नीचे नो बेक नो भाग छे, त्यां तिले ने सोल्डर्स सुधि बेक ना भागने आपड़े अने रिलैक्स करी सु तो लेट्स काउंट एंड यू टू फोकस ऑन योर बेक 1 2 3 4 एंड 5 अभी आपो फोकस छे ये आपना फिंगर हैंड फिंगर्स नी ऊपर ले जसू बन्ने हैंड फिंगर्स नी ऊपर पहला आपना लेफ्ट स्टार्ट करिए तो लेफ्ट नी अंदर तो तमारो फोकस रहा जो एंड तमारो पाम छे, हैंड छे, धीमे-धीमे रिलैक्स वर्मण से एकले नीति पाम सुधि नो भाग होवे रिलैक्स करिए लेट्स काउंट 1 2 3 4 5 अभी आपड़े नीति सोल्डर्स सुधि नो भाग, लेफ्ट हैंड साइड नो फोकस करिए लेट्स स्टार्ट 1 2 3 4 एंड 5 तमारो मोटा पग्नो बॉडी रिलैक्स दे रहे हो छे यू आर एंजॉय रिलैक्स सेशन, लेट्स गो ऑन राइट फॉर्म प्लीज फोकस डेट पर्सन एंड लेट्स स्टार्ट तू काउंट 1 2 3 4 5 अभी तमारे राइट हैंड नी नीस आपड़े अने रिलैक्स सेशन करावी एना मसल्स ने रिलीज़ करिए 1 2 3 4 5 अभी राइट हैंड सोल्डर ने आपड़े रिलीज़ करिए, राइट हैंड लेफ्ट हैंड ना बन्ने सोल्डर्स एंड छाती नो ऊपरो भाग एंड सोल्डर्स नो ऊपर नीचे ना भागनी ऊपर तमे ध्यान केंद्रित करो ज्यादा तमने फावे त्या लेट्स स्टार्ट तू काउंट 1 2 3 4 5 एंड कीप कंटिन्यू टेकिंग डिप ब्रीथ एंड लेट्स फोकस ऑन योर फोरहेड और योर चीक्स, योर चीन एंड रिलीज़ करवाना छे या मसल्स ने तो तमे एकदम विचार करो के एकदम तमारा मसल्स रिलीज़ दे रहा छे, फेस मसल्स रिलीज़ था या थॉट्स करो एकदम मैंने रिलीज़ छोड़ी दो जितना विचारो बंद करी दे, जितना एकदम ही रिलीज़ ससे अभी आपड़े एनो रिलैक्स सेशन स्टार्ट करिए, फोकस रखो 1 2 3 4 एंड 5 अभी तमारो फोरहेड छे, मातनो आजू बजू नो भाग छे, नीचे नो भाग छे ना फोरहेड एना पर तमे फोकस रखो तमारे एपेक्स छे माइन नू एना पर पर तमे फोकस रखी सको, फोरहेड पर पर फोकस रखी सको छो लेट्स स्टार्ट तू काउंट 1 2 3 4 एंड 5 अभी तमारो बॉडी एकदम रिलैक्स दे रहे हो छे एकदम जे रिलैक्स नो, रिलैक्स सेशन नो आनंद ले रहा छो अभी तमे विचार करो सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग नो विचार करो के आपना बॉडी ना बद्दाज पार्ट्स ना आपड़े थैंक यू के एकले आपड़े थैंकिंग स्टेरी सरू आता जे आपना थी करिए तो कीप कंटिन्यू टेकिंग डिप ब्रीथ विथ डी सेंस ऑफ वेल बीइंग एंड तमारा बॉडी ना जितना पार्ट्स छे एंड तमारे पोते थे थैंक यू के वानू छे तमारी रीते स्लो एंड स्टेडिंग पांच काउंट करिए एंड तमे मू तमने 3 मिनट बे 3 मिनट आपू छू तो तमे एंजॉय करो रिलैक्स सेशन एंड थैंक यू पंक्यो तो आई विल बी पाइट एंड यू शुड डू दिस अभी मू 30 एक गणिस त्यासु दीमा तमारी आज आइस क्लोज रहा जो तमारी अवेयरनेस वत्ती जसे 3 तमने आजू बजू नो साउंड संभड़वानो सरूत ससे, आजू बजू नी सेंस आवानो सरूत ससे पहला करता तमने रिलैक्स सेशन माती तमने अवेयरनेस वत्ती जसे दे एंड एक प्लीज कॉल, ओपन योर आइस एंड रब योर पाम्स एंड पाम रब रब करो एंड पाम रब करवाती जे पन एनर्जी उत्पन्न थाई छे ये यूनिवर्स मा तमे पाम रब करी दे जे हिट एंड एनर्जी जे उत्पन्न करी छे एंड तमारे आइस एंड माइंड फोरहेड पर तमे फिरवी सको छो चीक्स पर, फेस पर एंड एक लो तमे इनबिल करी सको छो एंड प्लीज गेट अप एवरीवन अपने एकदम मिनट पूछी गया बोधन यस प्लीज गेट अप एवरीवन, आई वुड लाइक तू टॉक विथ यू एंड गुड मॉर्निंग
देवल
अनम्यूट, प्लीज गुड मॉर्निंग
वाज ग्रेट बॉडी ग्रेट इट्यूड मेडिटेशन
गुड मॉर्निंग
गुड मॉर्निंग तू लॉन्ग नो, अनफॉर्चूनेटली वाज नॉट तू लॉन्ग बट
जयशिक्रास्या
थैंक यू बरद
अभी तमे कितनो के नहीं आपड़ा बॉडी ने, धीरज भाई वेलकम गुड मॉर्निंग थैंक यू, थैंक यू प्रश्न है आपड़े पहला बदा, पहला बदा म्यूट रखो एक साथे वन बाय वन जाई एकला माटे के खबर नथी कहा फोन माती एक को आवे छे एकले कोई नहीं संभला, एना करता बेटर के विल एक बैक बेस ओपन थाई आई विल इनवाइट सम्मान तू सेरीज एक्सपीरियंस यस रमनीका का तमे बोलता था, बोलो अम्मनत तो एक्सपीरियंस सारो चुंदरो सारो थाई छे तमे शब्द पॉजिटिव ना सारो एक्सपीरियंस था
यस, परफेक्ट एनीबॉडी एल्स हैव अन्यथिंग तू बरद भाई, ओके अशुभ भाई गो हैं
तो यूजुअली ये योग निंद्रा मा तमे आगल के दम आल्वेज थिंकिंग मल्टीटास्किंग एंड हाउ डू आई कंट्रोल डेट तमे आगल के दम, एंड जस्ट स्टेप बाय स्टेप के दम ने के एंड आई वाज रिलेटिंग डेट तू माय स्लिप टाइम एंड आई गो फॉर स्लिप धीमे-धीमे यू, यू कांट ऑफ अन क्रैश, यू लूज योर बॉडी राइट एंड इफ यू स्टे टाइट, यू कैन स्लिप एंड यू स्टार्टेड विथ डी टोस एंड यू गो अप राइट एंड यू स्लोली लाइक नो थोड़ो-थोड़ो प्रेस था तू जाए के लूज था तू जाए बॉडी राइट एंड इवेंचुअली गेट इनटू डी ब्रेन फॉर मी एंड आई डिन वांट तू गेट आउट तू बी फ्रेंड, तमे के दम ने के अभी आपको कॉलो ना नथी कॉल भी ब्रेन
बिकॉज़ यू आर एंजॉय डी रिलैक्स सेशन
एक्जैक्टली, राइट एंड वाज डी सो वंडरफुल एक्सपीरियंस एंड विल डेफिनेटली, आई वांट तू लिमिट फॉर विल डेफिनेटली नो हैव फ्यूचर सेशन एंड लर्न फ्रॉम यू, थैंक यू सो मच
थैंक यू अशुभ भाई, थैंक यू
यप, एंड आई थिंक वी कैन ऐड बॉडी ग्रेट इट्यूड इनटू आवर नॉर्मल योग निंद्रा एस वेल डेट वी कैन डू डेट तू बिकॉज़ एनीवे डेवर परपोज इट तू रिलैक्स डी बॉडी एंड आफ्टर डी योगा, वी कैन डू
अशुभ भाई बात मे बराबर पकड़ी ने समझी गया अशुभ भाई वागन ने लो क्वेश्चन है नो जतो के योग निंद्रा मा अर्ध्यति पदि मारे अवाद नथी अब तो बंद दे जाये एकले ये नो क्वेश्चन नतो अशुभ भाई हिप्नोटिज्म नो रूल्स है तमे जे बात समझी गया नहीं, तमे जे डेप्ट नी बात करिए, रियली लाइक इट के तमे कितनो के आपड़े चेन ने विचारो करिए नहीं, त्यारा पड़ा मसल्स तंग थे जता होई छे आपड़े जरे गुस्सो करिए, त्यारे आपड़ा बदाए मसल्स वधारे पड़ता तंग थे जता होई छे एकले आपड़ो लूज हैंड होई, टाइट थे नहीं, कोई नेट फैट भी मारी दे तो होई छे एकले विचारो ना लेवल एंड विचारो नी क्वालिटी ऊपर परंतु एनी विचार मा आपड़ो मसल्स छे नहीं, मा रिलैक्स सेशंस नथी होतू एकले घणीवार आपड़े रवि वारे नवरा सुता होए बेक अल्लाक तो आपड़े जागरत अवस्था मा पन आराम लागे छे पर ऑफिस मा आपड़े घणीवार के ऑफिस मा जाओ तो मैं आराम फिर नथी था तो एनो कारण आपड़ा विचार छे ऑफिस मा पन एक सोफा पर तमे विरीते सुता सुता असो तो तमे रिलैक्स सेशन फिर नथी थातु एनो कारण जे आपड़ा कंटिन्यूस विचारो होवने कारण आपड़ा जे मसल्स छे, मा रिलैक्स सेशंस नथी आऊतू तो जरे तमारे रिलैक्स सेशन जोतू होए आई का सेल्फ हिप्नोटिज्म नो पार्ट छे के जाते उन गावी जाय, सारी उन गावी जाय डिप स्लिप आवी जाय तो एना माटे तमने जरे पन उन जल्दी लावी होए तो तमारे डिप ब्रीथिंग करवानू छे एंड आयुराज जे बधि वस्तु के दी इन इमेजिनेशन करवानू छे के दरेक पार्ट्स बॉडी जॉइंट्स एंड सेल्स एंड टिश्यूज बदा रिलैक्स थे रहा छे एंड तमारे पास विचारो ती रिलैक्स करवाना भी छे जो तमारो फोकस नी मा आसे, तो रिलैक्स ससे एंड तमे डिप स्लिप नो आनंद ले सक्स
एन मनेल, धीरज लाल
जो जलते सुवामत शोक करू